I will now call the October 21st, 2018 Blue Springs City Council Meeting to order. If you would stand with me, observe a moment of silence and then I will each in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated. Want to welcome you in attendance, as well as those that might watch YouTube later, to tonight's City Council Meeting. Next, we have the consent agenda. Councilmember Fowler has asked to pull item F. Unless there are items to be pulled, accept the motion for approval.
Sir, move.
Sir, second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counselmember Kayler.
Aye.
Levissay.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Cole Pepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Counselmember Fowler. Item F.
Yes, Your Honor. This line item is the approval of a resolution to adopt amendments to the 401A Plan, which is Retirement Plan. It's the, these are plans which provide for the city's matched employee contributions to the 457 Plans. This brings up the city match to 3%. It's great to see that. It's moving forward. Also, I guess I want to highlight these types of retirement programs. This is the type that, and I've been involved in both of them in my career outside of here, but this is the type that you give the employee and it's the employee's money for their retirement going forward. And even if they don't get to use all that money in retirement, this is passed on to their heirs, which is a lot different than many other retirement programs that if your spouse or, you know, no longer uses it. It does not get passed on to the families. This particular one does, and I'd like to highlight that. It's good to see this extra match by the city.
Okay. Any comments or questions? If not, accept the motion to approve.
Sir, move.
Sir, second.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. We'll move to the first of several public hearings tonight on Liggett Trails Education Center rezoning.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. Council information form dated October 15, 2019, including staff reports for rezoning and PD concept plan with attachments. Affidavit of publication in the examiner on September 28, 2019. Applications with attachments of 185-foot notification maps, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Copy of letters sent to said property owners. Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, and 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference. Bill Number 4701 approving the rezoning, and Bill Number 4702 approving the PD Concept Plan. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Thank you, Madam, behalf of the city.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you this evening, our request for a rezoning and a PD Concept Plan for Liggett Trail Education Center, which is located west of southwest Liggett Road and approximately 650 feet south of the Liggett Road and Moreland School Road intersection. The approximately 24.79 acre site is currently zoned SF-7 Single Family and includes an approximately 34,000 square foot school building. The first request is to rezone the property to a planned development while retaining the base SF-7 zoning district. The rezoning to a planned development is required for two reasons. The first is that the proposed building addition is an increase in the total building area by more than 25%. And second, under the 2015 UDC, prominent civic building types over five acres in size require the approval of a master plan through a planned development process. The rezoning does not change the underlying Single Family zoning district, and staff finds that the rezoning request is consistent with the 2014 Comprehensive Plan, the area plan for the S1 area, and the Unified Development Code, and is appropriate for the site. The second request is for the planned development concept plan, which would allow the expansion of the existing Liggett Trail Education Center. The proposed expansion would be a single-story, 19,000-square-foot building addition on the south side of the current school building. This addition would accommodate additional classroom space, administration offices, a multi-use room, and associated building services and facilities. Building materials for the new addition would match the existing building and include a mix of brick, lap siding, wood cladding, and metal. The new addition is compatible in massings and projections of the existing building, and the height is also the same as the existing building. As the site is already developed, there are minimal site improvements that are proposed. However, there are few modifications being requested as part of the PD Concept Plan that would allow the prominent civic building type in the SF-7 zoning district, waiving all bike parking requirements, and to allow existing nonconformities with the pedestrian access requirements to remain. Only pedestrian access to the new building additions would be required to meet the current 2015 UDC. No additional parking is needed, nor will access change from Liggett Road. A Schedule C parking study was provided as required for school facilities, and it was determined that the site already has adequate parking to meet the needs of the new addition. Bike parking has been requested be waived due to the students being served in the education center, and as well as that this is a facility that serves the entire district, so there would be few students coming from the immediate neighborhoods, as well as staff. The site already meets all open space and landscaping requirements, and based on the concept plan, very few existing trees would be disturbed by the addition, as most of the area that's being proposed for the addition is currently open space with few trees. Staff does find that the application does meet the PD Concept Plan review criteria, and recommends approval of the site being rezoned to the SF-7 PD zoning designation, as well as approval of the PD Concept Plan with three staff conditions. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing for both items last Monday, October 14th, and unanimously recommended approval of the rezoning and concept plan, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions from the council? Councilman Fowler.
Yes, Your Honor. I did see this as it went through Planning Commission, quite a bit of addition there. Vehicle trips per day, is there an estimate as to how many vehicle trips per day this will increase the, over current usage?
I believe in the parking study, there was an additional 57 trips that were generated by that, and the applicant may be able to answer a little bit more about that.
So 57, versus the average of what currently?
Um, let's see. So right now, there are 54 staff at the current, it's the Cub Care Facility is what is moving in, so there'd be an additional 27 or so staff, and then an additional 89 parents that would utilize the facility. So there would be an AM group of 89 parents, and then an evening group of 89 parents. So altogether, it looks like an additional 200 trips or so generated, half would be in the morning, half in the evening.
Okay.
Councilmember Kayler.
My understanding, there isn't any extra parking?
There is parking currently. There's 148 spaces, and based on, since most of the parking is utilized during a 30-minute window, and the spaces turn over every 10 minutes, they have enough parking there to meet that peak time.
Okay, but we're increasing staff by 29?
Yes, and I may let the applicant speak to the total number of staff that will be here, but there will be an increase in staff to support the Cub Care system.
Anyone else? Councilmember Cole Pepper.
Yeah, as far as the parking, I can tell you that that back section of that lot is mostly empty. There's rarely a car in there, even during school hours, so they would have adequate parking.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Matt. We'll go to the applicant. Would the applicant like to come and be sworn in?
Our court reporter has laryngitis this evening, so I'll be swearing you in. If you could raise your right hand, and do you swear that this testimony you're about to give in this case is to be the truth, so help you God?
So help me God.
Please state your name and address.
Okay, Dan Anderson, 1311 Southeast East Church Circle, Blue Springs. Thanks, Matt. Mayor, council members, yeah. This is the culminating project of this 2018 bond, and it is the ability to bring over our Cub Care, which is currently at home of Carter Valley View High School. They've outgrown their space. We've done all we can do to try to help them out and meet the state requirements. So we'll have 12 classrooms there, bringing in anywhere from 80 to 100 kids. Those will be dropped off by their parents in the morning, and it can be about an hour and a half difference on all those kids. So it's not like they all come at once, like a typical school. And then, at the end of the day, some are picked up at 2:00, and some are picked up at 6:00, as late as that. So it's a very sporadic on the, on the picking up of the parking and things of that nature. Staff, they'll be, some will be early, and then they'll be released at 2:00, some come in later, and they get released at 6:00. And so when we were looking, and we looked at the parking study, we saw that we ended up on most days, over 60 stalls empty. So we add in the staff and the parents coming and dropping off. We felt like there was, it's not going to be any need, and most of the students that come to Liggett Trail are special needs, so they come in on buses, excuse me. And so very few parents come in. They might come in for testing, because our parents as teachers are there, but that'll be an individual, so on and so forth throughout the day. So, you know, we looked hard at that. We felt like we had room if we needed to expand it like that, but after the study, we felt like it would suffice.
Any questions?
That explains the parking. I have no problem with that. I just wanted to make sure there was accommodations, and I didn't realize that there were, my colleague made mention that there was extra parking in back middle. Thank you.
Anyone else, Councilman? Councilmember Edmondson?
Well, just to congratulate you that you're doing this project because it's must-needed. I get over to Cub Care periodically through the year, through business-wise, and, I mean, you're busting at seams over there, you're out in the hall with stuff stacked. I mean, you couldn't need a bigger space soon enough to go for this, so I'm happy to see this go through.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. Yeah, I know Rhonda's excited.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Your Honor, I just, when Liggett Trails was initially brought forward way back when, the neighbors in Park Avenue were very, very upset. They were concerned about their house values, they were concerned about what, how it was going to affect them and their homes. We had a lot of meetings, a ton of meetings. We did the school was, was great about flipping the parking lot with the building, so it didn't have as hard an impact on the people that are in that particular subdivision. I have had not one iota of, phone call, nothing on this. Everyone is satisfied that the school has been very, very good neighbors, and so there's been no, no complaints, no concerns. So I think that speaks a lot to the good neighbors.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Anderson, for your testimony. We'll go to the public. Is there anyone who would just like to speak in support of? Support of? Opposition to? Opposition to? Close this public hearing. Who would like to introduce Bill 4701? I will.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
It was a tie.
First reading of Bill Number 4701, an ordinance rezoning property from SF-7 Single Family Residential to SF-7 PD Single Family Residential Plan Development.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Sir, second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4701, an ordinance rezoning property from SF-7 Single Family Residential to SF-7 PD Single Family Residential Plan Development.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Levissay.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Cole Pepper.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance Number 4858.
Next, the second part of it is introduction reading of Bill 4702.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill Number 4702, an ordinance approving Liggett Trail Education Center Plan Development Concept Plan.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Sir, second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4702, an ordinance approving Liggett Trail Education Center Plan Development Concept Plan.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Sir, second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Cole Pepper.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Levissay.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance Number 4859.
Next, we go to another public hearing on the amendments to Section 403-120 of the Unified Development Code.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. Council information form dated October 15, 2019, including staff report with the following attachments. Application with all attachments, affidavit of publication in the examiner on September 28, 2019. Title IV Land, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, and 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference, and Bill Number 4703 amending Section 403-120 of the City Code of Ordinances. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Thank you. Mike, you're up.
Well, thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. This is a public hearing for unified development codes related to third-party building inspections. Also on the agenda tonight under Number Nine is companion ordinance to amend Chapter 500 of the City Code. The Missouri Legislature passed a change to the revised statutes recently this past year that went into effect in late August, that now allows for the licensed engineer who sealed the event, the final submitted building permit plans to the city, is now able to perform certain inspections in lieu of the city's code inspectors. And so because of that state law, the city code, under two different chapters, under Chapter 400, the Unified Development Code, and Chapter 500, both need to be amended in order to allow for this. Specifically, that, that language states, if I can get there real quick, it would be an amendment to Section 403-120 under occupancy certificates that basically adds a new subsection B, which says for new construction of one and two-family residential dwellings, "The licensed engineer who sealed the ultimate submission of plans for the permit shall be allowed to conduct the footing, foundation, wall, and framing inspections in accordance with the procedures for such inspections as established by the city. Such licensed engineer or architect shall report on such work using the uniform inspection forms provided by the city." So it would be those two changes there, and then under, those would be the two subsections in the UDC proposed to be amended. These changes were brought forth before the Development Advisory Commission, which recommended approval unanimously, and as well as the Planning Commission held a public hearing on these and recommended approval of the UDC code unanimously as well. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Councilmember Fowler?
Yes, yes, Your Honor.
And then Kayler.
Okay. I think we, maybe this came out of the Planning Commission, but this engineer who, licensed engineer who sealed the ultimate, or plans, I guess, there is no expertise within what type of engineer that has to be. Like, there's different classifications. I'm sure there's structural, mechanical, but then there's also chemical. So if a chemical engineer, licensed PE was to do this, they would be the ones doing the foundation inspection?
Yes, the state law only says that it has to be a licensed engineer, which is the professional engineer's license.
So I respect the state law, but that may be a little bit of gap in the requirements, I would think.
It could very well be, yeah. It just says whoever the engineer was that put their seal on those plans and that are turned into the city for final approval, and this is just for the building permits only, it's not the engineer who drew up, say, the land development infrastructure plans, it's for the building permits only, is able to go in and be the inspector of record for those four specific portions or times at which those structures are inspected.
Councilmember Kayler.
I would have to tend to think that the engineer, that if he's out of his expertise, he's not going to sign off or anything, because he will be liable for the sign off if something goes wrong with it. That would be my, my interpretation with my experience in the past with engineers. But I would, I would also, there was something said into Planning Commission, I think I understood, about the liability of where it would fall on the city or with the engineer. My understanding with that would be it would fall on because of the engineer signing off on it, it would be more have to go to the engineer. If that's the case, which I think it is, if that was the case, it would be more beneficial in anybody's interest, worrying about whether or not it's going to work or not, because they could go back to that direct engineer because of his liability insurance and his insurance, that type of deal.
And I would also think that there should be some bonding requirements for somebody doing that as well, but that's not something that we check on, as long as they put their seal on it, right?
As long as they put their seal on it, and then when they let us know that, you know, they're going to be doing the third-party inspection, and we can confirm that it's the same licensed engineer or architect who submitted and sealed the plans that is going to be doing the inspections, then the city is bound under state law to accept that.
So we're not reviewing this at all?
We would not be doing those inspections at all for those four different things. We'll still do the plan review, and making sure that all the plans show what needs to be done appropriately per the applicable building codes, but the city would not be involved in the inspections of those four things at all.
When we, we had meetings, multiple meetings, with a group of developers, several, I think it's been several years ago now, and we had, we had talked about having a list of acceptable engineers or whomever that would be, how will I phrase this, a list of those that would, we would feel were qualified to do that. So we have absolutely no input on this at all, then, the way this has come down. It's just whoever they have on the initial seal has the full authority.
On those four, on the, on the specific building inspections that I mentioned, yes. They would be the...
So it could be my cousin.
If he's a licensed engineer and drew up the plans and is willing to do the inspection, yes.
And we do know for sure there's no liability on the city, since these forms are turned into the city, we don't review them, we just take them in and file them.
We, we take them in, and they're on our forms, so that they match our forms, but yes, I believe that is the case. We talked a little bit about liability at the Planning Commission, and I think per the city attorney, that is still left a little bit as a gray area, but...
That would be my concern.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
That's mine, as well.
Let me go to him, then I come back to you.
Back to you, okay. If you, thank you. And it's kind of a dumb question, I apologize upfront, but, for example, if it's a large development project that stretches over a long period of time, which we've had some where they've started out and they dig through the last lots, five years, six years down the road, is that engineer still the one that does that, or they have the ability to maybe switch to a different engineer?
It would be based upon the engineer submitting the building plans on behalf of the home builder, and so, yes, as maybe the home builders, the home builders, there's multiple home builders in every subdivision, and usually the last one whose building isn't the first one who built, the developer and home builder. So there could be multiple engineers.
Involved in it?
Involved in any sub...
Because I know sometimes they pretty much copycat, there's like, you know, five basic plans and two different facade structures or whatever, but they're basically just stamping the same thing over and over, which is, is good business practice, I understand that, but I just was curious if, if somewhere down the line, each one of those has to be done, they just can't get by with doing a set of plans and get through that, every house that gets built has to come through with the inspection, right?
Every house that they choose to do this. Not all builders are going to choose to do this, to be honest. I think we've heard from maybe a handful that are going to look into doing this, but we've also had some other licensed architects and engineers say that when, that their specialty is drawing plans, that their, their business is not to go out and inspect the plans.
So you're still going to go out, and then, and if they request you to come out and do that, then we still go out and do that?
Absolutely. This would only be for if the builder chooses to go down this path. Otherwise, the city will still provide the same level of service in our building inspection process as we do now.
Okay, good.
Councilmember Kayler.
Basically, my understanding is, a good example is footings. If you get a good day in the wintertime, that you could put several footings in, there's no way that our inspections can get out there and do all the inspections, and that was the one reason they were bringing this part up, was a good day to pour some footings, but they couldn't get them all inspected because of the amount of footings they put in. So I think it's primarily going for the residential part of it, with the footings is where the, the contractors and the builders are going at, and specifically at this, because they were losing out on a certain window to get some footings in, to get the forms and stuff up before other cold weather came in. That's my understanding.
Yeah, that is one of the arguments that we have heard, is that, the push for this is that sometimes there just isn't a city inspector available on that day, be it a Saturday or a Sunday, or, and just, this would really help move things along, and, you know, there are a lot of other cities in the metro area that do this, and my understanding is that the reason why this came in at the state level is because there's a lot of smaller cities throughout the state that, that don't have any kind of provision for this, and they're, they're trying to make it more uniform across the state.
Mr. Johnson?
Everything that's been said here tonight is accurate, and Councilman Cole, Councilmember Cole Pepper, the meeting you referenced, I believe, would be two years ago in December. So time passes very quickly. We've met, had a number of meetings with the Home Builders Association of Kansas City, and they have been working, both a Missouri initiative and a Kansas initiative, to try to create opportunities to expedite processes. At the end of the day, that's what this is about. This is about moving the process along in a manner that allows the builders to be more efficient with their time and to take advantage of those opportunities where city inspectors might not be available. Staff is supportive of this. We were working on this initiative before it was introduced as a bill with the state legislature, and we're also working, this is my opportunity for a commercial for the planning department, because we're also working on other initiatives to improve the way we deliver services with our building community, and this is just an evolution of, of opportunity and efficiency in operation. We're, and if we haven't already done it, we're getting ready to launch online permitting with Intergov, that's, that's been something we've been working on for a long time, and also getting ready to roll out e-plan review. So instead of the stacks of paper that we require builders and developers to drop off to us, we would be able to submit those plans electronically, and I can tell you, I've seen all the monitors that have been delivered to City Hall that will be going into engineering and to the planning department. So this is one component of several other initiatives to hopefully move the bar and allow us to be more responsive to our building community.
Good.
Your Honor, yeah, I just want to say, I, when we sat in the meeting two years ago, I am in favor of this. I just want to make sure we have no liability, and that really has been my, my only concern, because I think it's great if we can move things along. The more we can do, the less paperwork we generate, the better off we're all going to be. I just want to be very clear about the fact I'm, I'm concerned about liability.
Anyone else? Seeing none? Thank you, Mike. We'll go to the public. Anyone who would just like to speak in support of? Support of? Opposition to? Opposition to? We close this public hearing. Who would like to introduce Bill Number 4703?
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4703, an ordinance amending Section 403-120 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to allow an engineer to conduct certain inspections in lieu of the Code's administrator.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Sir, second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4704, an ordinance amending Section 500.070 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to allow an engineer to conduct certain inspections in lieu of the Code's administrator.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Sir, second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4704, an ordinance amending Section 500.070 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to allow an engineer to conduct certain inspections in lieu of the Code of, Code's administrator.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Sir, second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Erickson.
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Excuse me, Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper, I apologize. Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levisay?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye, again.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4861.
Next, we have another public hearing on amendments to chapter 401 dash 411 of the Unified Development Code.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter to the record. Council information form dated October 15, 2019, including staff report with attachments, application with attachments of affidavit of publication and the examiner on September 28, 2019, Title 4 Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, and 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference, and bill number 4705 approving amendments to various sections of chapters 401 through 411 of the Code of Ordinances. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Mike, you're up again.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of city council. I'll be doing most of the presentation, but I will call on Matt to help me, help explain some of these others. These are annual, if not biannual, sets of amendments that staff brings forward to help streamline the code, to make it more user-friendly for both the staff and the developer and general citizen perspective, to correct errors that we've noticed as we apply the different sections when development applications come through, as well as to clarify and maybe clean up some of the items that we think maybe were unintended or may have unintended consequences when they're actually being implied in the real world versus just being on paper in the code. And so, the lion's share of these pertain to development procedures, regulations, as well as standards that staff believes will help make our development code easier to follow, easier to understand, and easier to implement and enforce. The existing UDC was adopted in October of 2015. There have been numerous rounds of these types of modifications to date, and this is one of those. So, I apologize for the length of the amount of amendments. We will try to get through these as concisely as possible. If you have any questions while we're going through these, please don't hesitate to stop me, especially if I get rolling too fast on these. So, the first amendment under section one would be the addition of a new section, 403.160, which would be entitled Alternative Development Standards. The purpose of this specific would be under, or this specific proposal would be under our development review procedures, would be to help streamline our development process by allowing an applicant to, in essence, simultaneously request a variance type of an application, as well as either a conditional use permit, or a preliminary plat, or a site plan design review application, to be able to process those concurrently and to have those heard and reviewed by just the planning commission and not having to do what they would do in our code now, would be to go get a variance to say a setback or a parking standard through the Board of Adjustment, and then go through the public hearing process at planning commission. That process by which they do that, where an applicant has a development that doesn't quite meet all of the facets of the code, they need to go get a variance from Board of Adjustment. Depending on the schedule, the next time that they could get their site plan in front of planning commission could be up to a month out. And so, staff feels that we'd be saving staff time and developer time, and that the planning commission may be actually a more appropriate body to hear both of those application requests at the same time, because they go hand in hand. And so, the way this is intended to work is that if development is being proposed, and as they're laying out the site or laying out their building, and they realize that they're not going to be able to meet all of the Unified Development Code standards, that they would make that request upfront, make a request for what we're calling Alternative Development Standards, identify those to city staff, and then that can only be done in conjunction with one of those three other development-type applications that are already going to be going to the planning commission. This would be kind of a piggyback onto that, and to have all of those alternative development standards, as well as the development applications heard at the same night under the same review body. It's not intended to replace the standalone variance request, such as for a single-family house that wants to add a deck, or a fence, or something that is not in compliance with the Unified Development Code. This would only be for development projects for those types of applications that I met. This is also not intended to replace the plant development zoning process, which is, which is a situation where the developer requests unique development standards for their project across the board, and is really trying to do something that is just, the development that they're proposing just doesn't fit within our development code. We've seen quite a bit of that with smaller lots and smaller setbacks and things like that, that would apply very broadly across the entire subdivision. These alternative development standards are really intended for those instances where it's, and how this gets implemented, we, we're, you know, we'll have to find our way on, but for just a few minor things where they can't meet the lot width on a certain number of lots on a cul-de-sac because of the smaller lot size generally on, for the rounded lot. Another example would be, we just had Dental Depot come through down on South Seven. They needed a variance to the building setback in order to extend the building out at the same plane it was previously. The setbacks had changed over time. And so, they needed to get a variance through the Board of Adjustment, and then come back a few weeks later and get their site plan approved through the planning commission. What we're proposing is to eliminate the Board of Adjustment, public hearing, and have both of those requests heard at the same night by planning commission. So, the code outlines the applicability, which types of standards are able to be requested to be modified. I want to be clear that uses permitted under a zoning district classification is not something that they can propose to modify. Somebody couldn't use this process to allow a commercial use in a residential zone, or any other land use that's not allowed in that zone. That would be for a planned development or a rezoning type application. It also outlines the process and review criteria, and how the, those alternative development standards shall carry forward through time. So, that is that proposal. Staff believes it will help, like I said, streamline the development process and make things cleaner and easier for everybody involved. Are there any questions on that before we move to the second section, or do we want to go through them all first and then have questions?
Yeah, I guess more of a matter of process or procedure. There's 11 line items here, and I know when they went through the planning commission, at the end, there was a motion that included some other options, if you will, or...
Right.
And is that what's in front of us, or would we have to make the motion to include those same line items as well?
We did not change any of the language that we took, that we presented to planning commission. We brought forth the exact same language before you this evening. We did note in our, in the CIF where the planning commission did not agree with staff and maybe recommended something different. And so, if the council would like to amend the language being proposed, then that would have to be a motion to amend it.
Okay. If you'd highlight those when we go through it?
Yes, we were planning to do that.
To say where the differences are and which way the planning commission recommended?
Yes, absolutely.
Appreciate it.
The planning commission and the development advisory commission both heard all of these that we'll present to you. They both recommended unanimous approval of that first one for alternative development standards.
Anyone else? Okay.
Okay. Matt?
All right, so the next section are a few changes recommended for the Downtown Development Code. The first one is related to the building types that are permitted in the T5 zoning district, which is primarily along Main Street, and that would be including the addition of rooftop decks, patios, and associated enclosures as allowed building type in the, in only the T5 zoning district in downtown. The second item is related to both the T4 and T5 zoning districts, which are primarily the multifamily and the commercial zoning districts in the downtown zoning district area. And this would be related to the mixed use and live-work building types in T4, and then the mixed use and live-work building types in T5, as well as the small commercial building types in T5. Both of those include changing the height for the first floor at the sidewalk level, currently which is 15 feet floor to ceiling, and decreasing that to floor to floor to 12 feet. And then on the upper levels would be, which is currently a 10-foot height of floor to ceiling, changing that to floor to floor, or floor to roof if it's the top floor. And that is the same, same thing that's proposed for the T5 zoning district as well. There's an illustration there to kind of show what that recommendation means. Also, on the top floor, that does not include the parapet wall, so the parapet is in addition to that, that height. The main reason for this change is we haven't, we've had recent new construction with Blue River Family Dental, and they ran into some challenges with meeting this requirement, especially a single-story building having a 15-foot floor to ceiling can be very difficult, especially for an office-type use where they need drop-down ceilings for their equipment and things that will be hanging from the ceiling. So, we felt that, we also reviewed several other downtown codes throughout the region and found that 12-foot was, was a standard. There were certainly some codes that had a 15-foot, but 12 was more common than not. And so, that's why we are recommending to bring that forward, especially since there's a lot of opportunities for additional new construction along Main Street. We want to be able to accommodate some flexibility in those building heights. The DAC and the Downtown Review Board both recommended unanimous approval of these changes to the Downtown Development Code. The planning commission did recommend, they had some concerns that that was too drastic of a reduction in the height, and so, they recommended leaving, changing the, removing the ceiling and just allowing a four, floor-to-floor height of 15 feet and a floor-to-floor height, or floor-to-roof height of 10 feet. So, leaving that number, but just changing the measurement from floor to ceiling to floor to floor, which will reduce it a little bit. But again, then we're, the planning department is then having to review drop ceilings and things like that, which is something that we typically don't get involved with, and that's more of a fire or building code issue. So, that's, that was our main reason for recommending the floor-to-floor rather than floor-to-ceiling. Any questions on those measurements?
Councilmember Edmondson? These recommendations are minimums. I mean to emphasize that.
Yes.
If a builder or somebody that's developing something, they can set the height to whatever they want. If they've got art galleries, per se, that they're trying to put together and they want really tall ceilings so they can get things in there, they're allowed to do it. We're just talking about reducing it to a minimum of 12.
Correct. And these, and they are just minimums, and there may be certain uses where by building or fire code, they have to have a higher ceiling based on their occupancy for safety purposes.
Anyone else?
So, specifically to the planning commission recommendation, staff is comfortable with the original language then. Is that what I hear you saying?
Yeah, we are, yeah, the language that's on the screen is what we are recommending. I just noted what planning commission had recommended.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Okay.
The next section is just adding a simple line to the permitted building types. This is kind of already implied by the Unified Development Code in another section, in section 411. However, we have run into some situations where now that we base all of our building stand, development standards based on building types rather than zoning district, there are certain building types that aren't captured within the Unified Development Code. And so, we are recommending to add a sentence at the end that just gives the Director of Community Development the power to make the determination of what building type a proposed use or building falls into, based on location and/or land use of that building type. This has primarily only come up when we're dealing with, for example, a utility like a water pump station, a water tower, a billboard is another example, just kind of unique uses that we don't run into very frequently, whereas it may not make sense to have a specific additional building type for that. It could just be applied, a different building type that may be adjacent to it. For example, a billboard along I-70 may make sense to just be a general commercial building, because that's what all the adjacent buildings are. So, that's, that's what we're recommending to add to that, to capture those uses. Any questions on that one?
Proceed.
The next section is addition to, well, some cleanup of the residential building type standards for the rowhouse land use. This was added to the 2015 UDC to capture primarily four plexes, or three to eight plex units. We have not utilized this building type yet, and a lot of the reasons, I believe, is because it's not clear in the code of how to apply this. So, we're adding some additional language to clean that up, to make it more applicable to potential developments. The frontage width right now, it just says 16 to 32 feet. It's not clear if that is the unit or the lot, so we're making that clear that it's a 16-foot minimum and 32 max per unit. And then if you're on an end or corner, street corner side unit, you get to add that additional setback of whatever that is to that width. Same with the area. We are changing that from a 16 square foot minute, or 16,000, or 1600 square foot minimum to a 3,200 square foot max. And then again, you get to add the additional area for your side or corner side setback, clarifying the minimum maximums on the front. And then, under the design and performance standards, eliminating the first sentence and replacing with the requirement that no more than eight lots or units may be attached, which would eliminate anything over eight units, and then a minimum of 20-foot separation between adjacent buildings. And then removing the require, the allowance of a courtyard development. We feel that that would be, if somebody wanted to do a courtyard-style development, that'd be more appropriate in a planned development, so we would steer them in that direction. There is an illustration in the staff report that kind of shows how that can be interpreted. Again, you could see we're adding, the two middle units are at that 16 or 32-foot range, and then if you have a 16 or 32-foot lot, you get to add the additional five feet to that on the side, or 12 feet on the corner side. So, just cleaning up that land use to make it a little bit easier for developers and staff to understand. Any questions on the building type?
Can you go back to the courtyard?
Yes.
Can you restate that for me, please?
Yeah, so, right now in the code, and this, they have, we have this in a couple of other multifamily-type land uses. The courtyard pattern would be if you were to have a lot and then have, say, a fourplex, that's, they're all kind of ringed around a central lot. Right now, it does allow you to have up to four buildings or 16 units on that lot, provided the lot size is at least 75 times, or .75 times the lot size required. So, we're proposing to remove that, allow to, basically, if somebody wanted to do that, steer them more towards a planned development.
Okay, thank you.
Because I feel like that's a unique design that probably would be more appropriate for that setup.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
The next set of amendments is under section 405.060A, accessory uses. We did something very similar to this with the special use standards, and so, we're proposing to do it with the accessory use standards under the code. Both, as we did with the special use standards, there are certain development standards that are specified for each type of special use, such as the medical marijuana, for example. And so, because we have moved away from doing a use variance, which is a variance to those special use standards, and we did a code amendment earlier this year where we said if you want to vary or modify from any of those special use standards, you can do so, but it needs to be done through a conditional use permit application that's heard before the planning commission. Similarly, there are development standards associated with the accessory uses that are identified in the code, accessory uses such as home occupations and other similar accessory uses. And again, in order to provide anybody seeking relief from those standards, an opportunity to have that heard, and since we've been steering people away from the use variance, this would also apply to the same standard, that if you want to modify any of those accessory use standards outlined in the code, you can do so, but it needs to be done through a conditional use permit approved by the planning commission. Also, under the accessory uses, we are proposing a different height for accessory structures within the residential estate zoning district. Within the past two years, we brought forward an amendment to the UDC which limited the height of accessory structures. Previously, they could be the same height as is allowed in the base zoning district, regardless of the height of the principal structure. And what we ended up with was some single-story houses up at the front of the lot with a 35-foot tall garage in the back. And so, the amendment we made back then was to limit the height of those accessory structures to 16 feet, or the height of the principal structure, whichever is less. An unintended consequence of that, you know, it looked good on paper, as we do with amendments, when we actually have to apply those as developments come in- when we actually have to apply those as developments come in, we didn't account for the large lots throughout the city that are over an acre in size that typically take up a lot more lawn equipment or tractors or other things of that nature in order to help maintain those large parcels. And we found that it's really difficult to build a detached shed or detached garage to store those at a 16-foot height. That doesn't look kind of ridiculous, and it actually can have a garage door that's 10 feet tall to be able to pull that equipment in. And so, what we're proposing is that for only those properties within the residential estate zoning district, those detached structures can have that 35-foot maximum height limit, that the same height limit that would be for the principal dwelling unit or the principal structure. However, if they want to take advantage of that provision, then they have to comply with all of the setbacks for the principal structure. Currently, in the code, accessory structures have reduced setbacks of two-and-a-half feet to the side and rear property lines, with the general idea that they're small and don't tower above fences and things of that nature. And so, what we're proposing is to say that they can go up to 35 feet within that zoning district, but if they are going to do that, then they have to comply with the zoning district standards for the residential estate zone, which are 25 feet for the side and rear. Any questions? Okay. The next section is under parking and loading. Many years ago, we adopted a maximum parking at 125% of the required parking. So, if a development was required to have 100 parking spaces, by maximum, they could only provide 125 spaces. And the intent of this really was to crack down and reduce the sea of parking that we see out in front of large lot retailers. And so, this often gets used when we have a Walmart or Home Depot or grocery store so that they don't have this massive sea of parking out front that never gets used. An unintended consequence was that this has really kind of hampered the ability of existing buildings that have been vacant for some time to be reused, because those existing buildings and those existing parking lots were built many years ago, not based upon different parking ratios. And so, we'll have a use that wants to go in there, but doesn't require a lot of parking. Say, an old QuickTrip turns into a doctor's office. Well, the doctor's office parking requirements are a lot less than the QuickTrip parking requirements were. And so, there is this massive parking lot out there that this new business isn't going to need all of that parking and would be capped at 125% of what they are required. And so, in order to help facilitate and promote the reuse of some of these vacant buildings we have, we're really trying to tailor this maximum parking requirement to only apply to sites where 40 parking spaces or less are required by the code. And so, this, in effect, after 40 parking spaces, you're allowed 25% extra parking, you could put up to 50 parking spaces. So, this would apply to anything kind of less than that. Anything more than 40 parking spaces would still be capped at the 25%. So, if we had a small building and they only needed to provide 10 parking spaces, then they could be allowed to have, you know, 13 parking spaces as, or up to, or actually, no, I'm sorry, let me read that. Shall provide no more than, so they are allowed to provide 10 more than what's required. So, if they're only required 10, they can have 20 rather than have it being capped at 13. I'm sorry, I was confusing myself there. So, reiterate that, if somebody has required 10 parking spaces under this new section, the maximum that, under the current code, they could put in would be 13. This is saying you can provide up to 10 additional, so they would be capped at 20 parking spaces. So, it's allowing them a little bit more wiggle room in terms of how many existing parking spaces that they need to use or parking spaces that they need to get rid of. So, we're really trying to focus on the smaller sites throughout the city.
Counselor, have a seat.
I have a question, but I want to go back, so if you have any questions with the parking. I want to go back to the height, the height thing.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a, I don't know really if it's a question about the parking. I get really frustrated when we have somebody come in and they only need 20 parking spaces and they want 50. I mean, you know, all that parking, empty space, hard, hard surface, I have a problem with that. And if, if a business only needs 10 spaces, why would we want to allow 20? Why would they want 20?
Well, if the, there's a, there's a difference between what they need and what our code says that they're required to have.
I understand that there's a difference there, but what I'm saying is if, if a business comes in and says, you know, I'm, I don't know, I'm a dentist and I'm only going to have, you know, five patients an hour, so I only want, you know, 10 spaces. I know there are times when we require a lot more than that.
Yes.
And I don't understand why we require more or why would we want more.
I think what we were intending is also to look at it differently is for when the dentist comes in and, under our code, they're only required 10 spaces, but they have 10 people that work there. And then they've automatically used up all of those required parking spaces. This would then allow them to go up to 20 spaces to be able to provide for customer parking, whereas if we applied our maximum now, they could only have 13 parking spaces. And so, it's, it's to help accommodate those, but what staff felt was a reasonable, in excess, if you will, of 10 additional to what they're required. So, if their needs are that, but if they get above that 40-space mark, then they have to comply with the 20 spaces.
Well, in your example, they wouldn't request 10, they would request.
They would request.
X for the employees and X for the patients.
Right, but code would require it at a different level, and then it would be reduced by that current maximum we have.
Okay, I got to think about that.
So, I want to go back to the, to the height requirement.
Yes.
For the accessory structures. I understand the concern if it's a 35-foot in height, if they do want to build just a 16-foot shed to put their riding lawnmower, could that still maintain the two-and-a-half feet?
Yep.
Okay, so the, it only goes to the 25 feet if they're building a big 35-foot garage.
Yes, yeah, the 16 feet would still enjoy the same reduced setbacks. It's if it's, they want it to be anything taller than that, then it's got to be the full 25-foot setbacks that the house has to meet.
Okay, and 25 feet on the residential estate, that's not like in the middle of the yard like it would be in the smaller.
No, no, I think the minimum lot, the minimum lot size for a residential estate lot is an acre.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, you got another section, is that concluded?
Do, that is it for parking and loading.
That's about half.
Yeah, we're getting there, seven of 10, so. The next section is under plating, which is the subdivision plating process, specifically under administrative plaits. These are the subdivision plaits that staff has been authorized to approve without having to go through the Planning Commission and City Council process because they are deemed to be minor enough that are really supposed to help facilitate development. And so, such things as minor lot line adjustments between two properties, a revised final plat that doesn't change things within a certain degree of difference from the original, or a minor subdivision, which is combining of two or more lots into one, or very minor type subdivisions that staff has been given those, the authority to approve those administratively. And as such, we believe that there are two different, or two other types of plaits that we can do administratively.
One thing.
Yes.
This is a great place to just park for a moment and remind the council that over time philosophies change with regard to development. And, and there, there were several years ago where these types of things would have been brought to the Planning Commission or, and/or the City Council, and these are the types of things that the City Council has supported, allowing staff to make administrative decisions in order to expedite planning processes. And I just want to remind the council of that.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you. The first is changing the condominium plat to a townhouse plat. Many years ago, the city used to process condominium plaits whereby a building is divvied up in terms of the airspace and turned into a condo unit. That is all handled at the county level now, and so, the staff or the city doesn't process condominium plaits anymore anyway. So, we just changed the name of it and are calling it a townhouse plat. And what this plat is, is the subdivision of an existing four or fewer unit structure, so an existing building that has four fewer units, and the underlying property into no more than four lots, as long as they can meet all of the development standards and subdivision regulations within the UDC. And the goal of this is to really promote that, that townhouse-style dwelling or residential type unit where you own not only the airspace, but you own the building and you own your fee simple lot, the land as well. So, over time, we believe that the condo kind of unit structure and housing type, the desire for that may change, and people may want to add more fee simple land to that. And all this is, is the ability of a home, of a building owner or four-unit owners to subdivide their property so that they can do that. The only way that it's allowed to be minor, as we're proposing, is if it meets all other UDC regulations. The second that that, they start asking for variances or alternative development standards, that kicks in review by Planning Commission or, or public hearings. The second is to add a new type of plat, which is, we're calling a conveyance plat. And this is a plat that is combining or subdividing any number of parcels of previously unsubdivided land for the sole purpose of sale or conveyance. We've done this in the past on a one-off kind of basis, and we've called them for-sale-only plaits. And they take a previously unplatted large parcel of land, and somebody, say, wants to carve off half of it in order to sell it to somebody else. Currently in our code, that would require a full subdivision, going through the public hearing process and having plans and all of the things that go along with that. And nobody, and we've often found that sometimes they just don't have the desire to develop it at this point, they just want to sell some of it. And we don't have a process for that that is easy or makes it simple on those property owners. And so, what oftentimes happens is they go to the county with a deed that has a meets-and-bounds legal description, and the county records it, and they've just illegally subdivided the property. So, this is putting a formal process to something that happens in, you know, kind of pretty frequently at the county level, and we're just saying that this would now be a formal subdivision process to the city. There's two main points of this, is that through the conveyance plat, they would only be creating tracks of land, tracks of land on which you cannot get a building permit. Only building permits can be issued for buildable lots. And so, these conveyance plaits wouldn't create lots, they'd create tracks. And that is the city's safeguard against somebody trying to use a conveyance plat as a development plat, if you will, and trying to subvert any of the other development subdivision regulations. And so, we've made it clear that this conveyance plat does not grant any rights to development or guarantee of public utilities access, or wishes of addressing or permits without having to go through the full subdivision preliminary plat, final plat process. This is only to help those property owners that wish to maybe subdivide their property or combine two properties into one just for the process, just for the sole purpose of being able to sell it to somebody else. And so, staff feels that that's a minor enough process and that doesn't involve any granting of right-of-way or granting of easements or approval of development plans in any way, and therefore feels that that's something that's minor enough, given the other administrative plaits, that, that staff would be able to handle that administratively. Any questions?
Keep going.
Okay. Section nine is under parking and loading. There's two main changes in this one, and it pertains to the dimensions for parking lots, both commercially and potentially residentially, let's say, in a multifamily development. The code has a table which identifies the parking stall width, as in how wide the parking space needs to be, and then based upon that, the stall length, how long it is, and then correspondingly, the drive aisle width between the two parking spaces. On the stall width, under A here, this vertical column, staff noticed that the error that should have been cleaned up years ago, this should read eight-and-a-half to nine to nine-and-a-half, rather than dropping to eight. That eight is just a misprint typographical error. We really don't want to see any parking spaces less than eight feet. That's getting really tight. And so, eight-and-a-half to nine-and-a-half are the standard widths, and so, that, that middle number should be nine. And so, that's what's carried on down through this column here. The stall length, we are proposing to add a stall length for one, or parallel parking. Currently, the code does not have one, and so, we're, this would just be in addition to it, in addition to the code, specifying that if you're going to do a par, a parallel parking space, it needs to be 23 feet in length. The aisle width, amendments are things that staff had noticed in looking through some of the developments we've had that have come through recently, as well as looking at other codes and some accepted urban design standards contained from the American Planning Association that are a little bit more contemporary than what are in our code. Currently, if you have a standard 90-degree parking space, which is what the bulk of parking is, and we see these days is, you know, it's right angle to the drive aisle, that the parking aisle width can be up to 28 feet required for an eight-and-a-half-foot-wide parking space, or 26 feet for a nine-foot parking space, or 24 feet for a nine-and-a-half-foot space. Correspondingly, as the parking spaces get wider, the aisle widths get a little bit smaller because you have a little bit more room to maneuver your car into that parking space. The tighter the parking space, the more aisle width you need to be able to pull in and out of that. So, the numbers that we've proposed, 26, 25, and 24 respectively, were based out of those, those books, as well as some research we've done with some of our neighboring suburban communities, not only in Missouri, but also some of the neighbor, suburban communities that I was familiar with in, in the Denver area as well. And the bulk, the maximum width that we saw anywhere was about 26 feet, and some went down to as low as 22 feet. So, we're just trying to bring these to be more contemporary with current standards. Any questions on that section?
Yeah, was there feedback from the Planning Commission on that?
There was, thank you for bringing that up. The Development Advisory Commission did not, they recommended it unanimously. The Planning Commission, however, did not like this change. They did not believe, kind of in practical real life, that cars are getting smaller and that actually that there's more SUVs and trucks on the road today and that parking lots are difficult enough to maneuver, and so, they were not supportive of, of these changes and wanted to keep the drive aisle widths as they are currently under the code.
Did they make that part of their formal recommendation?
They did, yes. That was the, the second of the two formal recommendations that they made based upon staff's recommendation. Staff is still recommending the language, but they did not recommend this, the, just the drive aisle width section.
Right.
They did not recommend that.
Just a quick feedback that I got from them, I think, these are minimums. I think they acknowledged that, hey, if, if you're in like a downtown area, you know, maybe the minimum should be that, but out here in the suburbs, they do see cars getting bigger, and they felt like it was more comfortable to have our current numbers in there versus this, I guess.
Mm-hmm.
And I can see the difference between downtown and out in the suburban areas, so.
Thank you, Yara. I don't have a problem with changing the nine in the width from the eight, but I do have a problem with the aisle width. I think we need to stay with the same without going shorter, because you have the trucks, you have the SUVs, and you have those certain people with the smaller SUVs that still can't maneuver into the parking spot. And I think we're just causing ourselves a lot more trouble, because when I was out in Colorado for six months doing a project out there, it is a mess having the smaller aisles. I would like to amend that later to that.
Yes.
Anyone else? Proceed.
Okay. The next section is under 407020, which is block and lock access for single and two-family residences. Currently, the code has a cap on the amount of driveway width for any given driveway at the front property line or the right-of-way line, and that is capped at 30 feet. However, it wasn't clear in our code that that 30 feet should apply to all of the total pavement width per given street frontage. And what brought this to our attention is we had a building permit applied for, and given the way that the lot was situated, they had a garage, a shed, and wanted to put a detached garage, all on the same street frontage. And the code. And the code could have been read or interpreted, it was not crystal clear, and they could have argued that each driveway could have had a maximum of 30 feet. And then we would have had 90 feet of pavement on a, on a lot, and staff felt that that was too much. So we're proposing to clarify that, to say that 30 feet in total, and all widths refer to the total driveway of the lot, not each individual driveway. However, when we presented this to the Development Advisory Commission, they made a recommendation, and so we did include that, that recommendation they made for an additional allowance for corner lots. Corner lots, as we've kind of shown here in this example, where you have your main driveway on this street frontage, but on this street frontage, you may have either another driveway built into the house, or you may have an accessory structure as an accessory garage, or you may even have a lot that has a circle drive. And so they wanted to allow for an additional 10 feet of driveway to be able to access that accessory structure in the back. And so the, the language we're proposing is that for corner lots, the cumulative total of the individual driveway widths at the right-of-way line shall not exceed 40 feet, provided all other requirements of this section are met. So for corner lots only, they could have one 30-foot driveway or up to 30-foot driveway, and then they could have an additional, whatever that difference is, up to 40 feet in total for those two street frontages. So if they had a 30-foot driveway on one street, they'd be capped to 10 feet on the other. Or in the case of a circle drive, if they had 20 feet on one, then they'd be capped at 20 on the other in order to have that 40-foot total.
I have a question on that. We talked about this a bit at the DAC, but there are existing homes that exceed that a great deal, not very many of them, but they do. I realize they'd be grandfathered.
Mm-hmm.
But if you have a corner lot and you have a circle driveway, and then you have a three-car garage that is not fed by the circle driveway, and then you have a fourth-car garage on the other side of the corner that has a driveway to it, you could have, even if you made them really small, you could easily get 50, 60 feet of concrete, and it still looks nice. So what would you do, or how would we handle that situation, maybe one out of 5,000, but it's, it still seems like we should address that?
I would say that that would be best addressed through a variance request and for the burden to be placed on that homeowner as to prove to the Board of Adjustment or make their case to the Board of Adjustment why their lot is unique and different, and maybe it is because of just the situation that you described. They had an existing three-car garage and they, you know, they bought it from the guy who added on the fourth-car garage, and now they want to add on this other one. And so because of the nature of, like you explained, one in 5,000 homes throughout the city, those, and staff's view are typically best handled through the variance process versus having a code that were to try to attempt to address them all.
So one more question to that, then. If we're fortunate enough to get another large lot subdivision?
Mm-hmm.
And there are four corners, and there are 16 homes that want to do this, would they each individually then, by that proposal, be required to do that? I guess they would now if we passed this.
They could, or they could do the alternative development standards, should that pass this evening. Let us know upfront that that's one of the standards they would like to modify as part of that, or they could do a planned development zoning. So there's, there's multiple options for them, should there be a unique situation like that.
Good, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else? Proceed.
Okay. Section 11407-040D, under front fences. Currently, all fences in the, all fences in the front yard that are in front of the building shall be no higher than four feet. And what we're proposing is to allow those houses that are classified as detached house estate lots that front onto Collector or Arterial Streets would be allowed to have up to a six-foot-tall fence in the front yard, provided that is a metal picket-style fence or wrought iron-style fence. We have a few of these throughout the city. We don't have a lot of these type of lots, to be honest with you. A lot of them that we have are down on 19th Street and Moreland School Road, and actually all of those houses there that have the, the nice picket fence with the masonry columns all had to come in and get variances for those. And we just approved a variance within the last two years for the other house that wraps the corner to the west on Moreland School Road. And so staff believes that due to the proximity of these houses on Collector and Arterial Streets and the speed of those traffic, that allowing that two-foot additional height will help visually separate the house from that more heavily-traveled roadway. And by requiring that they be the decorative metal picket style, that it would not have a negative visual impact on the streetscape or on that house. And so we don't have too many more of these, probably left throughout the city, but rather than require variances for these, we thought it would be a, a good idea to just allow for that upfront.
Any questions?
Okay. And then the final section is under building permitting. Currently, as I mentioned earlier, that before a building permit can be issued for any property in the city, it has to go through the formal final plating process. And this provision that we're proposing allows the community development director the ability, on a case-by-case basis, to determine that certain uninhabitable structures may be issued building permits prior to a final plat recordation. There are two prime examples that we looked at in this, is we have multiple properties throughout the city that may be multiple, larger acres in size, that just have been an old farmhouse for many years, that just haven't developed or haven't needed to develop or just haven't needed to go through the subdivision plating process. And when they come in for a fence permit, say their fence falls down and they want to put up a new fence, technically, under our code now, they would not be allowed to be issued a building permit for that fence, because it has not been finally platted. The provision we're bringing forward would allow the community development director the ability to consider that and state that this is an uninhabitable structure, such as a fence, and that it's minor enough to not require that homeowner who's not proposing to do any development to go through the formal subdivision process, which can be lengthy and quite costly, and may turn a $5,000 fence project into a $15,000 project in order to do the subdivision plating process. The other instance that this has come up recently has been in our newer subdivisions, some of the ones that are building now. Staff recently adopted a, a policy that for signs, signs typically don't require a building permit, except if they're over six feet in height for a monument sign, you know, with the, the solid base. Those, in conjunction with our building department and codes administration folks, were determined that that's a structural enough sign, that it needs to be reviewed to make sure that the footing and the foundation is appropriately sized to be able to hold up the weight of that sign. So thus, any monument sign or freestanding sign over six feet in height now requires a building permit. And what we're finding is that as these home builders are constructing their subdivisions and putting in their infrastructure and their roads and sewer lines and water lines, that they also want to get some of that branding and marketing upfront and start installing some of those signs prior to that final plat getting recorded. And so this just allows them to start doing some of that ahead of time. And I want to make clear, it would only be for uninhabitable structures. We would not construe this to mean pools and clubhouses and things of that nature, where if, you know, a building permit is being issued, there's actually going to be people occupying or using whatever structure it is to be able to be put in before the roads and the water lines and things like that, would be able to serve it from an emergency services perspective. So this is only for those that, that the community development director would deem are appropriate. It does not mean that he has to agree to that in any way, but it just allows him clear authority to do that if, if it's determined that it's minor enough to not be an effect on either the subdivision or emergency services. And that concludes our presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions at any part of any of them.
Okay, thanks, Mike, and also Matt, for the presentation. Are there any other questions or comments from the council before we go to the public? Seeing now we're going to the public, anyone in order to speak and support up? Support up. Opposition to? Opposition to? Close this public hearing. We would like to introduce bill number 4705.
I'll introduce, Your Honor. First reading of bill number 4705, an ordinance amending chapters 401 through 411 Unified Development Code of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to amend and adopt regulations related to development procedures, regulations, and standards.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
The second? Second. Discussion?
Yes, Your Honor. I guess, although it took staff 45 minutes to go through all this, in a very summary, this is progress with our development code, so I appreciate staff for bringing all these forward. I know it took a lot of hours and a lot of, lot of effort to a lot of different commissions to get them here, so appreciate that. I do feel as if I have to support the planning commission relative to the aisles. I hear another support, so I'll, I'll move the bill be amended to adopt the parking dimension recommendations with the exception of the aisle widths.
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a motion second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries.
Is that it? No more amendments?
Well, we still have to vote on the first, now that it's amended, yeah.
All right. Roll call on the first?
Well, no, just all in favor, aye.
As amended.
As amended, right.
So we're not doing a roll call?
We're not roll calling, no, that's when, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As amended, yes, okay. All same sign. Okay, so now we go to second.
Bill number 4705, as amended, an ordinance amending chapters 401 through 411 Unified Development Code of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to amend and adopt regulations related to development procedures, regulations, and standards.
Your Honor, move the bill as amended, be approved on its second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call now.
Councilman Colpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levacek?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edvinson?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4862.
That brings us to the last public hearing tonight on the amendment to section 405, period 050.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibits to enter into the record. Exhibit number one, council information form dated October 15, 2019, including staff report with attachments, application with attachments, affidavit of publication in the examiner on September 28, 2019, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, and 2014 comparings of plan by reference, and bill number 4706, amending section 405-050, the Code of Ordinances. Exhibit number two, or it was entered today and has been distributed on the, on the dais, we have exhibit number two, signatures obtained from students on September 30, 2019, at St. John L. Land Elementary School, requesting the city make vaping and smoking illegal for everyone. This is all we have to offer for the record.
And basically, this exhibit that they presented, this doesn't have anything to do with this, this has to do with distances in a, in a number of establishments, but anyway.
But, Your Honor, I just, I had been invited to go and speak to these students, and when I walked in the door, the first thing they did was hand me three sheets of paper and said, "How many more signatures do we need to get this to stop?" And I just thought it would be good for the council to see that these kids are really watching and interested in this, and I thought it was great that they cared.
Very good. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. These are proposed UDC amendments related to short-term loan establishments, also known as payday lending establishments, and tobacconists. And just to remind everybody, the definition of the tobacconist is a commercial establishment primarily for the sale of tobacco-related products. Tobacco-related products shall include, but not limited to, cigarettes, cigars, pipe, tobacco, loose tobacco, cigarette papers and pipes. This definition shall also include electronic and vapor cigarettes. So when we're talking tobacconist, we're talking anything that has to do with nicotine and businesses where that is their primary purpose for being in existence. We're not talking about gas stations or convenience stores or liquor stores that sell these as an accessories. These are just those stores that are solely involved with the sale of tobacco or nicotine-related products. The proposed amendments would reduce the already-established regulations, or reduce, are aimed at reducing the number of these establishments throughout the city. The city has had UDC regulations in place for loan, short-term loan establishments since 2007, and most recently adopted the tobacconist regulations in 2018. Staff was asked to draft additional regulations to help reduce the number of these such facilities throughout the city, and that is what is being proposed this evening. The proposed amendment for short-term loan establishment would decrease the number of allowed establishments throughout the city by increasing the ratio of short-term loan establishments from one establishment per every 4,500 residents in the city to one establishment per every 12,000 residents in the city. It would also increase the separation distance between individual short-term loan establishments and similar businesses, pawn shops, gem dealers, things of that nature that are outlined in the code, from the currently established 1,500-foot distance to a 2,500-foot distance, and also increase the buffer from the city boundary from 1,500 feet to 2,500 feet for the ability of those short-term loan establishments to locate in the city. The proposed amendments for the tobacconist would also decrease the number of allowed establishments throughout the city by increasing the ratio of tobacconist from one, one tobacconist per every 8,000 residents, as it is in the code today, to one tobacconist per every 12,000 residents, and would also establish a buffer of 500 feet between any two tobacconists. Currently in the code, there's also an additional buffer which helps to limit the location of these type of establishments in the city, which states that, pardon with me here, that for a tobacconist has to be 500 feet away from any residential use or zoning district, church, school, or public park. Given the city's zoning district layout and our, our zoning along commercial corridors, to be honest, that one has been probably our most limiting factor for that. It's the 500-foot separation from any residentially-zoned district, church or school. And so this would just add that 500-foot buffer to individual establishments to help break up the congregation of similar-type uses near each other. The Development Advisory Commission heard these amendments as written, and they voted two to one to not recommend approval of the UDC amendments for the tobacconist, and, oh, wait, to recommend, sorry. So the DAC voted to recommend, by voting two to one, the tobacconist amendments. They voted one to two to not recommend approval of the UDC amendments for the short-term loan establishments. So they were split on both of those. They were in favor of the tobacconist regulations, were not in favor of the short-term loan establishment regulations. The planning commission at their public hearing voted six to four to not recommend approval of the text amendments. These are the presentation for staff. Staff does recommend approval of these and would happy, be happy to answer any question.
Any comments or questions? Councilman Foul.
Yes, yes. At the planning commission, I did want to highlight a couple of points that were made. If I got this correct, I think that our neighboring cities of Independence and Lee Summit have tougher standards than our city does right now. Correct me if I'm wrong. And, and since they have tougher standards and we have looser standards, if businesses that may not be able to locate in Independence or Lee Summit may move to Blue Springs. As a matter of fact, I think that we are not, relative to small-term loans establishments, there are actually openings where our current ordinance allows us to, to have more of those businesses in town. Is that correct?
That is correct. Our, our short-term loan establishments regulations could be classified as not being as strict as neighboring communities, and based upon the current ratio and population as outlined in the code, the city's allowed to have up to 12 such establishments. We currently have nine, and so there is an opening for, for three additional of those businesses in the city based upon the current ratio and the current distance requirements.
And is that the same for tobacco?
For tobacco, it's a little bit different. For tobacco, the city of Blue Springs is one of only a handful of other cities that actually has distance requirements and setbacks in land use regulations for tobacconists specifically. And so I believe the only other two that we're aware of, after doing some, again, research, is Raytown and Independence. So many of the other neighboring communities do not have specific setbacks and buffer requirements for those that, that we were able to find.
So, yeah, it was an interesting point, that neighboring cities are slightly different. So, yeah, it was an interesting point that neighboring cities are slightly different. That could move some businesses our way. However, we still have a little bit of space there, it sounds like, to form more of those businesses with our current. And I guess one other thing relative to small, short-term loans was that some of those businesses are now going to the internet?
Yes, that's what we've often found, is that the brick-and-mortar concept of short-term loan isn't necessarily have to be done at a shop. Those can be readily accessible over the internet now. And I would also like to point out that our tobacconist numbers, based upon the current ratio, we allow six throughout the city, and we currently have five, based upon our current ratio, so. But based upon the separation, and I do have maps, if you'd like some clarity of these, a lot of those are congregated near each other, and so this could reduce those even further. The payday lending establishment, where those are located towards each other, the increase in buffer would be significant on reducing those numbers. So be happy to bring up those maps if you would like me to show those or answer any other questions.
I guess one more comment, Your Honor, and that is, it seemed like to me the majority of those dissenting on this vote to not recommend were focused on the free enterprise system, that in other words, we still have, our system right now allows for more, and businesses have not grown to into Blue Springs, so they felt like the free enterprise system was doing its thing. And so I think that's what the dissenting votes were about.
Your Honor, I have one question.
Yes.
You mentioned Quick Trips and convenience stores and all that. What about a liquor store that has the tobacconist in it or the tobacconist that has a liquor store in it? And that's all they do?
It would be classified as falling under whatever their primary business license was, and so if it was a liquor store and they had accessory tobacco products, I don't think we've seen one where they had a separate business within it, but it would be based upon the business license that they have. And so if, you know, like, I've seen that at times where you have a grocery store with a separate liquor store in it. I believe that this would, this tobacconist would apply if, say, a cigar store or vape store tried to open as a separate business entity within an existing tenant space as a liquor store. That would be a new business license for that new operator, and these rules would apply to that.
Counselman Amos?
And if we do pass this, we're not putting any existing business out of business. Their grandfather did. So those that have places and are doing existing business, we're not legislating them out of business?
No. Our grandfather or non-conforming status says that they can continue to operate as long as they maintain all of their current licenses and pay their taxes and comply with all city codes, but if should one of them vacate the premises, then one would not be allowed to go back in.
So is there a way to, and maybe I'm not understanding you right, but I'm going to ask the question anyway, if that existing business gets vacated under current ordinances, as long as the same use goes back in with a certain period of time, that's allowed? Or am I mistaken?
It depends. For, I think for short-term loan, let me double-check here, for the, I don't believe the short-term loan, no, well, it's kind of a difficult to answer, but both of them require a conditional use permit now.
Would have to, so they'd have to come back for approval?
So they'd have to come back in for a conditional use permit. So even if one was there before and has been operating without a conditional use permit because it's been there for 20 years, and it goes out of business, and somebody wants to come back in, then we would consider that a new business that needs to get a new conditional use permit, and so they may not be able to go back into that space.
I guess that's my question is, if we tighten up on this, I would like to tighten up on the fact that if something gets vacated, you don't have that continuous rolling over of basically that business just changed operator, but it's still going on and going on and going on.
That would only-
If there's a way we could tighten that up, I would approve or would recommend us doing that.
I believe the requirement for the conditional use permit would do that.
Would do that.
Because any exists, any new conditional use permit would have to comply with the new ratios and all of the setbacks in order for it to be introduced.
Then that would-
So if you have two right next to each other-
Achieve what I'm wanting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think that was contemplated when those were written.
Counselman McCullough?
Yes, Your Honor. When this first came up for discussion, I had been approached by Doug Cowan at the Community Services League. What I, what Independence has actually is a little stricter than ours in that theirs, I believe, is 15,000. I may be off on that, but I think it's 15,000.
I believe so.
But their concern was not, they're not discouraging free enterprise. Their concern was the fact that so many of these types of businesses, I'm talking payday loans now, prey upon those people that are most vulnerable, and they have some great concern. So that is how this came to be, because CSL came to me and was very, very concerned. I then came, of course, as city staff, and we looked at the surrounding communities to see what was going on in those communities. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Before we close the public hearing, there's something to think about, counsel. The DAC voted to approve one and not the other. The Planning Commission voted six-four to reject the whole thing. So my question to you is, once we get down to it, do we do a separation of the question into two different parts? And that gives you an opportunity, if you support one, you don't necessarily, and don't like the other one, you don't have to do that, so. That's going to be my recommendation, that we do that when we get to the actual bill. Okay, if not any other questions, we go to the public. Is there anyone in order to speak in support of? Support of? Opposition to? Opposition to? We close the public hearing. So who would like to introduce bill 4706?
I'll introduce, Your Honor. First reading of bill number 4706, an ordinance amending section 405-050 of Title IV Unified Development Code of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to amend and adopt regulations related to short-term loan establishments and tobacconists.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. A discussion. Is there a motion to have a separation of, separation of the question?
So moved.
Second? Okay.
Are we going to have discussion, or are we going to do the amendment?
Yeah, you'll get discussion once you have the separation of the question. So right now, does the motion separate the question?
But there's discussion-
In the two parts.
I understand that. I thought we had a discussion.
But there's discussion on whether or not to separate the question.
Oh, you want to discuss whether we want to separate it?
No, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, all in favor aye?
Aye.
Both same sign. Okay, we're going to have a separation of the question. Now, which one was first?
405-050A.
And that is?
That is the short-term loan service.
Okay. Okay, so that's the first question is on a short-term loan. Now, is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now we get into the discussion on the short-term loan. Did you have?
Well, Your Honor, I have, I'll say this once because it applies to both, but back in June of this year, this council approved the concept of the Blue Springs Life Skills Center as opposed, as proposed by the Spirit Council. In that proposal, they made these same recommendations, and I just wanted to point out that we didn't really approve those recommendations. We approved the concept of their development and their addition, so that's all.
Anyone else? Counselman, Councilmember Fowler?
Yes, yes, Your Honor. I, as I mentioned before, the, it was, I felt it was a good point about the other cities being a little bit tougher, and we could be, you know, inviting more businesses to come out here that are unable to locate in Independence or Lee Summit. At the same time, I respect, I'm liaison of the Planning Commission, I respect where they came from, so I will be supporting them tonight relative to the short-term loans and be voting against the recommendation for approval.
Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, we've had discussion, we're going to roll call it.
And can I get guidance from the city attorney with this being now, and I've never separated a question on a bill before, is this the second reading of this question or is, are these separate? I'm not sure how to handle this.
We had the first reading.
Of, yeah, of the bill?
We did have the first reading of both combined.
But we didn't have a vote on it.
Not yet. You had a vote to amend.
We had a vote to amend, so we have not voted the first reading yet of the separation.
And I think it's good to do a first reading.
So just first and second reading of each question?
Right.
Okay, great. Thank you.
But I'm going to roll call the first reading instead of voice vote.
All right. So first reading of the first question related to short-term loan service. Councilmember Levise?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
No.
Councilman Erickson?
Aye.
Councilmember Edmanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilmember Kayler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried with a vote of six to one. All right, all right. Second reading of the first question, short-term loan service. All right, so there's really no reading on that. All right. Thank you for bearing with me here. All right, we've got, all right. Councilmember Levise?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
This is on, I want to make sure this is on tobacconist?
No.
We're on second. Okay, all right, so no, second reading.
All right. Councilmember Erickson?
Aye.
Councilmember Edmanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilmember Kayler?
Aye.
Councilmember, or, Councilmember Mayor Ross. Mayor Ross, thank you, carried unanimously, or, I'm sorry, six to one. Good night. All right.
Okay, so now we have a motion on the second part of it that has to do with the vaping.
Okay, the second question-
Oh, with tobacco-related. I said vaping, tobacco products.
Do you have a motion on that?
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Just discussion. This, if I'm correct, that this is the one the Development Advisory Commission voted in support of?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, all right, just want to make sure I'm clear on that.
Any other discussion? Okay, we're going to do the same thing. We'll roll call each one.
First reading on the second question relating to tobacconist.
Right.
Councilmember Levise?
Aye.
Councilmember Fowler?
Aye.
Councilmember Erickson?
Aye.
Councilmember Edmanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilmember Kayler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously. All right, so we're taking the second vote on the second question relating to tobacconist. I'm getting the hang of this. Councilmember Levise?
Aye.
Councilmember Fowler?
Aye.
Councilmember Erickson?
Aye.
Councilmember Edmanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilmember Kayler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Now, they both passed, but I felt that since there was such a separation from the DAC and the Planning Commission that we needed to do that separately, so.
Now, we have not signed an ordinance number to those.
Yeah, you need to sign an ordinance number.
And I, that's where I was kind of getting at before. I'm not sure how to do that. If we split the question, do we go?
Since we split it, legal counsel. Do we give a separate ordinance number to each one?
I think so.
Yes.
All right. All right, so we've already done the first and second reading on, so we've gone to 4684 ordinance number related to short-term loan service.
Okay.
4684 and 4685 related to tobacconists.
Okay, we got it.
All right.
All right. Is there anything else Community Development would like to add for the good of the order?
No.
That was quick. Okay, let's move on to introducing the reading of bill number 4707.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
Okay.
All right. First reading of bill number 4707, an ordinance approving the final plat of Axiom's Kingswood.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
There's a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor aye?
Aye.
Both same sign?
Second reading of bill number 4707, an ordinance approving the final plat for Axiom's Kingswood.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and assigned the appropriate ordinance number.
There's a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Levise?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.